Hello and welcome to a study session with me. Today, we're gonna look at some words on Anki Droid, or Anki depending on what device you have. And we're gonna write for each word uh a sentence. So that we try and train also to try to activate the language. You can write if you want your sentences in the comments uh down below and I will correct them very happily. Okay, so we start. This is our Anki and these are the cards that I've prepared for today. Let's start the study session, thirty minutes, okay? Let's start. Tongue. Tongue is a first word. In Italian, la lingua. La lingua. Okay, let's try and write a sentence. Um. La la lingua di una persona è sempre bagnata. Okay, so la lingua di una persona è sempre bagnata. Bagnata means wet. Okay. This one, maybe a new word, wet. La lingua di una persona è sempre bagnata. This is so weird sentence, but we continue. Did you get it? We continue. Priest. Okay, priest comes from um a video that I made a few days ago about a very im- important song for me. Uh it's one of my favorite songs from one of my favorite artists and you can find it in in my video sections. Um it's called Scalo a Grado. Okay, so if you've seen that video, you know that priest in Italian is il prete. Il prete. Okay, let's create a sentence. Il prete dice la messa la domenica mattina. Okay. Il prete dice la messa. La messa is mass. La domenica mattina. On Sunday morning. Okay. Let's continue here. Next word, heaven. Heaven also comes from that same video. So if you do not know these words, you might wanna check that out. Heaven in Italian, il paradiso. Il paradiso. Let's see if we can come up with a sentence. Um. Le persone buone vanno in paradiso. Okay. Buone means good. So good people go to heaven. Le persone buone vanno in paradiso. Okay. Next word, cloud. Cloud in Italian, la nuvola. La nuvola. Let's see. Oggi le nuvole sono bianche. Today, the clouds are white. Bianche, white. Next word, happiness. Happiness in Italian is la felicità. La felicità. Hmm, let's see, um. La felicità è una bellissima emozione. Okay, emozione, it's an emotion. La felicità è una bellissima superlative conissima, bellissima emozione. Next word. Smile. Smile in Italian, il sorriso. Il sorriso. Mm mia mamma ha un sorriso bellissimo. Here again, we have the same word. So we don't add too many new words. And mia mamma ha un sorriso bellissimo. Mamma has a beautiful smile. Okay. Next word. Friend. Friend. You know this one, l'amico. L'amico. È importante avere un buon amico. Importante, of course, it's important. It's important to have a good friend. One, you can see it here. It's the same word we had here. Good. Good people, a good friend. Okay. And also, we do not put the o here um because it sounds a bit weird. If you were to say buono amico, it's too many vowels close to each other. So we just say buon amico. Remember that. Okay, let's continue. People. People is also a word that we saw in the previous video I was tell telling you about, Scalo a Grado by Franco Battiaito. Very beautiful song, check it out and listen to it. Even if you don't watch my video, just listen to it. Uh but in my video we go over the lyrics. So if you do not know the meaning of the words, you can watch my video and learn about them. Okay, the people. La gente. La gente. La gente è piena di impegni. Okay, impegni is stuff to do. Uh commitments or just things that you have to do during the day. And to be pieno, pieno di, essere pieno di, it means that you're full of something. So basically, the sentence means the people are very busy. In Italian, busy could be impegnato. Impegnato. La gente è molto impegnata. Or è piena di impegni. Okay. Next word, how are you doing? The words are fairly basic. So you should know them and if you don't, these are really words that you need to know. Cause they will pop up all the time when you read Italian texts or listen to anyone speak Italian. Street. Street. La strada. La strada. La strada, oops, la strada è vuota. Vuota means empty. The street is empty. La strada è vuota. Okay, next word, to talk. To talk is parlare. Parlare. Hmm. Io parlo lentamente. At least I hope I do. Io parlo lentamente. Lentamente is an adverb and it means slowly. Io parlo lentamente. Okay. Face. Face, quite similar word to English. La faccio. La faccio. Ha la faccia tutta rossa. La faccia tutta rossa. Rosa is red. Tutta means whole. So her or his, we don't know because we have the the subject that is hidden away. So we don't know. It's third person, but it could be lui, ha la faccia tutta rossa or lei, ha la faccia tutta rossa. We don't know. It doesn't really matter. We we should know from context. So if we look at the context here, then let's say it's a she. So she, uh her face is all red. Okay. This is she's a bit embarrassed. Okay, next, night. Night, la notte. La notte. Um here we have an Italian phrase. La notte porta consiglio. This is something that we say in Italian. Consiglio means advice and portare means to bring. So la notte porta consiglio. The night brings advice. This is a phrase um in Italian which just means that if you have to take a decision and you do not know what decision to take, you should just sleep, go to sleep, sleep over it and then in the morning you will know what to do. La notte porta consiglio. Okay, it's an interesting one. Next. World, the world. Il mondo. Il mondo è grande. Okay, the world is big. Il mondo è grande. Easy sentence, for once, huh? Next. Ship. Ship in Italian is la nave. La nave. Say mai stato su una nave? Mai, ever. Have you ever been on a ship? Mai also means never. But in this case, when you when you ask this sort of question, it's always translated into English in ever. Have you ever been on a ship? Sei mai stato su una nave? Okay. Next word. Hand. Hand, la mano. La mano mi fa male, una mano. Fare male means to hurt. So my um my hand hurt. Well hurts one, one hand. Okay, mi fa male. It hurts. Next word, the police. Police, la polizia. La polizia. La polizia mi ha fermato. The police has stopped me. Fermare. Polizia mi ha fermato. Year. Year, anno. L'anno è iniziato un nuovo anno. A new year has started or has begun. È iniziato, iniziare means to start or to begin. Un nuovo anno, a new year. Okay. Next word is life. Life, la vita. La vita è bella. La vita è bella is also the title of a movie with Benigni, you probably know it. But it's also um our sentence for today and for this word. Okay. Next word. House. House in Italian is la casa. La casa. Sì, sta bene a casa. Stare bene means to feel well at home. And the sì is the impersonal. It means that we all do. It's a general thing. It's not just me. Otherwise, I would have said sto bene a casa. And it's not just about you, otherwise we would have said stai bene a casa. But it's a general thing. Everyone can agree with this, so we use the impersonal sì. Sì, sta bene a casa. Next word, money. Money in Italian, i soldi. I soldi non fanno la felicità. Here we have the word we saw before, la felicità. I soldi non fanno la felicità. Money don't make you happy. And fare in this case means it to make. It doesn't make you happy. And this is also a phrase in Italian. I soldi non fanno la felicità. Next word. To argue. To argue. Litigarre. Litigo. Spesso con mio fratello. I argue often with my brother. My brother. Litigo spesso con mio fratello. Okay. We're halfway through our thirty minutes. If you want to take a break, you can. Otherwise, you can stop this video of course and otherwise we'll continue. Next. To look for. To look for in Italian is cercare. Cercare. Sto cercando mio padre. I am looking for my father. Sto cercando mio padre. Sto is the word that we use to do the progressive form. Stare plus the verb ad the gerund. Sto cercando, sto andando, stiamo facendo. Okay, stiamo facendo, we are doing. Uh stanno guardando, they are looking. Okay. It's the verb stare plus the verb that ends in ndio, so the gerund. Okay, study, stare plus the gerund. Okay. To try. To try in Italian, provare. Provare. Easy. Provaci. Provaci means try it. Try it. Provaci. Okay. To feel. To feel, sentire. Sentire is also to hear something, but in this case, to feel, sentire. Mi sento stanca. Sento stanca, I feel tired. I feel tired. Mi sento stanca. If you're a a man, of course, mi sento stanco. Okay. Next word, to listen. To listen, it's different from to hear. To hear, sentire. To listen, ascoltare. Ascoltare. Sto ascoltando, here we have the progressive form again, la radio. Sto ascoltando la radio. Okay. A secret. Secret in Italian, il segreto. Il segreto. Non si dicono i segreti. Non si dicono i segreti. Here we have the impersonal sì again. Because it's a general thing. If I was just talking about myself, I would say non dico i segreti. But this is a general thing. In general, you should not tell secrets. So non si dicono i segreti. Okay. Next word. Cake. Cake, la torta. La torta. La torta. Make it bold. La torta al cioccolato è la mia preferita. La torta al cioccolato, chocolate, is my favorite. La mia preferita. La torta al cioccolato è la mia preferita. Okay. Next word, to play. To play as in the kids are doing, not on a musical instrument, to play with a ball. Giocare. Giocare. Giocchiamo insieme? Giocchiamo insieme? Can we play together? Or let's play together? But it's a question. Giocchiamo insieme? Sky. The sky, il cielo. Il cielo. Il cielo è blu. Okay, so we also do colors. We see blue now. We saw red and we saw white. Okay, il cielo è blu. Tree. A tree, l'albero. L'albero è alto. L'albero è alto. L'albero, the tree, is tall. Next word, the sun. The sun, il sole. Let's continue with the with the colors. Il sole è giallo. Il sole è giallo. Next word, the rainbow. In Italian, l'arco baleno. Long word, l'arco baleno. L'arco baleno ha tanti colori. L'arco baleno ha tanti colori. The rainbow has many colors. Next word. The muck. The muck in Italian, la taz. La taz. Oh, una tazza rosa. Here we have colors again, pink. Oh, una tazza rosa. Next word. Book. A book. Il libro. Libro. We do the progressive form again. So try and come up with a sentence with a progressive form if you want. This should be easy. Sto leggendo un libro. Sto leggendo un libro. I'm reading a book. Pets. Pets, it's a very short word in English, in Italian, it's two words. Gli animali domestici. Animali domestici. È bello avere degli animali domestici. It's nice to have pets. Animali domestici. Domestici is a word that for some reason comes from home. Um I don't know how, but it does. This one is an adjective that means of the home. Okay, I should study the etymology of the word. But trust me on this one, this one means of the home. Next. We have five minutes from the thirty minutes, so keep up the effort. Child. A child, bambino, il bambino o la bambina if it's feminine. Okay. Il bambino dorme. Dormire, to sleep. Il bambino dorme. The child sleeps. Okay. Next word, parent. Parent, oh sorry. Genitore. Genitore. Il genitore è felice. Felice means happy. So the parent is happy. Il genitore è felice. The city. The city, la città. La città è grigia. Grigia, gray. La città è grigia. Church. There it is, the church. In Italian, la chiesa. La chiesa è piccola. Piccola means small. La chiesa è piccola. Next word. Bread, very important word. Bread in Italian, il pane. Il pane. Il pane è buono. Buono means good, we saw that before. Where is it? Buone, le persone buone and un buon amico, we saw, I don't know where it is, I've lost it. But it doesn't matter. Um buon amico, le buone persone, means good. In this case, it also means tasty. It's good or it's tasty. Il pane è buono. Next word, water. Water in Italian, l'acqua. L'acqua è fresca. L'acqua è fresca, fresca means fresh. L'acqua è fresca. Next word, car. Car, la macchina. La macchina è vecchia. Vecchia means old. La macchina è vecchia. The car is old. Next video. Video, no, next word. Let's go. To learn. Learn, imparare. Imparare. Sto imparando l'italiano. Sto imparando l'italiano. Okay, this is something that you could say to people. Sto imparando l'italiano. I'm learning Italian. Maybe it's our last word, slow. Slow in Italian, lento. Lento. La tartaruga è lenta. La tartaruga is an animal, this animal right here, the turtle. So the turtle is slow. Okay, let's do one more. To run. To run, correre. Right? Correre. Correre fa bene. Okay, fa bene means that it's good for you, oops. We saw fa male a la mano, where is it? Mano, mi fa male una mano, it means it hurts. Fare male, the opposite, fare bene, means that it's something, it's good for you, so running is good for you. Correre fa bene. Okay. So I've got more words, if you enjoy this type of content where we can study together uh words in Italian, let me know. Also, I'm very curious if you have written any sentences, I will very gladly uh correct them if they're, if they need to be corrected and we'll see each other on the next video. Bye.